Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, July 22nd, 2014 to order with the invocation from Commissioner Leitner.
Heavenly Father, I just ask that you be with us this evening and be with us as we make decisions and have communication regarding important decisions and item agenda, or agenda items up for discussion this evening and, you know, pray that everybody can be reasonable today and just, we just ask for your guidance in discussing those topics. And I ask that you be with our military as they are always fighting for our freedoms so we can be here discussing these items openly and publicly without having to worry about anything that they're worrying about. And I just ask for safe travels for everybody this evening in your name we pray. That's it. Amen.
Katie will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Luchka?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Palacek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Shawwell?
Here.
All present.
This time I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written. We have, we have a motion in support. Any items to be added to the agenda or taken away? Seeing nor recognizing none, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. At this time, we have Department on Aging Citizens of the Year Senior Awards and the Zero seven point dash one four point two three. First is for Susan Patton. We have a motion?
Support.
I have a support.
Support.
Now therefore be it resolved, we are recognizing Susan Patton as one of the important volunteers who contribute their talents to government, community groups, and individuals. The Jackson County Board of Commissioners, the Jackson County Department on Aging, and the Jackson County Fair extend their appreciation to Susan Patton for her unselfish service to the people of Jackson County. Therefore be it resolved. Use our lights to vote, please. Can you post it? Oh, I gotta rejoin the meeting. Unanimous? Excuse me. That's fine. I don't have one. Yes.
Did he not vote yes on you?
No. Is it yes? A yes vote?
Resolution passes unanimously. It's all cleared. And that reflects the A up there. I'm gonna apologize right now for mispronouncing the name for Marilyn Gittinger. Resolution for Senior of the Year zero seven dash one four point two four. Therefore be it resolved, we are recognizing Marilyn Gittinger has one of the important volunteers who contribute their talents to government, community groups, and individuals. And the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, the Jackson County Department on Aging, and the Jackson County Fair extend their appreciation to Marilyn for her unselfish service to the people of Jackson County. We have a motion in support?
Mr. Chair, the motion, the last, the two resolutions together. Do you want me to do it?
I don't believe we need to. Everybody's comfortable with their previous vote being yea?
Yes.
Please let it note that both resolutions passed unanimously. Are there any communications or petitions to come before the board? If you have anything in writing you would like to appear in the record, please step forward and give it to us. Seeing none, we have no special orders or public hearings. We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Each individual will please state their name, and you have five minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under public comment at this opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. This is the first opportunity for public comment.
Cool. Thank you, Chairman. I am Derek Dobie. I am on the City Council for the City of Jackson for the Sixth Ward. I probably annoyed a lot of you yesterday by calling all your phones. I'm here to speak tonight with regards to the resolution on the agenda for, the resolution opposing the City of Jackson's stormwater fee. The stormwater fee is something that has a long history in the city. The past City Council put it on to, into, passed it as an ordinance. We had the subsequent lawsuit, which you guys were a party to. We repealed the fee, and there was encouragement within the county commission, the community, to put the ordinance in the matter to a public vote. We circulated petitions within the community to do just that, gathered over 500 signatures, mostly from the west side of the city, but from all, all of the wards of the city. A lot of City Council members also signed the petitions. To put it to a matter of public vote, that's gonna allow us to assess a fee, given the authority from the public, to assess a fee to pay for our stormwater mitigation, to clean the water before we discharge it into our lakes, rivers, and our watershed. And in order to do that and provide cleaner water, you know, we wanna sweep the streets, pick up the leaves before they get into our catch basins, clean out our catch basins, and do everything that we can to make sure that we're cleaning that water and providing the services that residents want. The ordinance before you, and I can go into more about that, but that's the essence of what the fee would be for. We had it before. It provided those services, street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, curb and gutter cleaning, and the leaf removal, so that those leaves didn't decompose and get into the water and dissolve oxygen. We had those services before. If the fee came back, we would provide those services again. It stands to reason that the fee would be commensurate with what the fees were before, save a few different altercations to the way that we address those fees with changing the way that the residential properties are assessed to make it more equitable, that they're based on permeable versus impervious surface area for all of the properties, residential or non-residential alike. We also expanded the credits so that individuals could receive 100% credits. Many businesses in the community already are going to be not having to pay any fees because they meet that threshold. And I can give a few examples of that. O'Neill, Dr. O'Neill on Elm Street has taken steps to mitigate her stormwater runoff. She would pay zero. The county commission, it's important to say, sorry, the county, rather, would pay zero because of the impervious to impervious surface area. You have a lot of pervious surface area, the Cascade Park, so that would offset those. The county would be paying zero under the proposed ordinance. So, there's a lot of misinformation going on out there. I'll address a few of these, and I hope some of my counterparts would also address them tonight, or address what I don't have time for here tonight. The fee will be charged on the fourth whereas. The fee will be charged to schools, churches, nonprofit organizations, county property. Yes, it would, but that also doesn't, that hides the fact that those properties would be available to apply for credits that would offset any sort of fee that they would be paying. For instance, the county would be paying zero. The fifth whereas, under the direction of the city manager, the ordinance creates a drain commissioner. That's just simply not true. I don't know where that comes from. I had lunch with the drain commissioner today. He's not under the assumption that that is something that would be happening under the ordinance. And the last whereas, allowing a city employee to access a citizen's property and/or building anytime infringing upon their Fourth Amendment property rights. Under the Drain Code, Public Act-
Derek, you've run out of time.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Good evening. Maybe you know me. I'm Patrick Burtz, City Manager for the City of Jackson. And while I appreciate the board's fortitude in placing this resolution forward, some of the things that the Vice Mayor brought up, I'd like to kind of reiterate. I wanna start by saying, first of all, I'm asking you not to pass this resolution tonight, and there are specific reasons to do that, none of which not that resolve, would be Drain Code 1956, which gives the county drain commission, as the county agency of this county, the ability to enter upon premises, requires all of the same powers that are in this ordinance. By the way, just so you know, the ordinance was never repealed. The regulatory portion of what we have to do with the Clean Water Act was never repealed, only the fee to do it. We also have a section, and I'll submit into evidence, I didn't do this at the time, but you have a copy of the County Septage Waste Ordinance that allows a maximum $5,000 fine and allows people to do the very same thing that this ordinance says you're against. If you believe that the city personnel entering to inspect a property and make sure they comply with federal, state, and local ordinance, you also believe that the county ordinance regulating soil erosion and sedimentation control number 14, that allows up to a $10,000 fine per day by this board and by the county drain office as your agent, then you have to assume that you wouldn't agree with your own ordinance. And this is not to be confrontational, it's to say that these, these types of fines and ability to check to make sure the law is complied with is consistent throughout the federal government, the state government, county government, local governments throughout this nation. This is nothing new. The current ordinance that was never repealed still has these authorities, so vote no on this, and a resolution to do this doesn't change the city's ability to enter upon premises. And by the way, you can't do it. If somebody says no, you can't come on our property, you have to get a warrant, just like the drain commissioner would have to do, just like the Health Department would have to do, just like anybody who was enforcing a regulation of this county, of this state, the federal laws, and a local ordinance. So I just wanna make sure that people were aware of that before, and hopefully to inform you that if, that if you were going to pass the resolution tonight, that we're all aware that really we're asking for nothing, and actually less, than the same county board sitting here has the authority to do by entering upon premises to make sure that those laws are complied with. And, by the way, the $10,000 day fine, the $1,000 or $10,000 day fine was copied directly out of the county ordinance when the council passed it in 2010. So I just want you to be aware of that, and please, we're asking, we're really asking that the county board not insert itself in a local matter with the-
Why do we have an actual amount?
Yeah, and I do wanna talk, and Derek reminded me, the issue about why we don't have an actual amount in the ordinance. Many people do not. You do not, in many of the fees at the county levies, you don't actually have a vote of the people where you could not change it unless you had a vote of the people, including decreasing the amount. It's not uncommon to pass a law that sets up the, what county boards by passing a resolution, setting a fee for something, that's an administrative function of a county board, it's an administrative function of a city council. We ask you to consider that, knowing that at some point, nobody sitting up at this board probably would pass an ordinance that go to the vote of the people that restricted you to the point where the public officials who are elected by their, as their representative through a public vote, has to speak their mind and be able to perform these functions in the best way their conscience leads them. That's what we have representative form of government for. It can't always be a vote of the people through a town hall structure. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your willingness to listen to me, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Mindy Bredech-Orta, representing the Jackson County Chamber and Citizens for Government Accountability. I'd like to speak to you tonight also on the city's stormwater control charge, item 17A in your agenda. We are asking residents to vote no on the proposed stormwater ballot because we believe that funding the currently written ordinance would be a mistake. In particular, the city government has not told us what this ordinance is going to cost. And we understand not putting specific amounts in ordinances in legislation, but there's no plan to tell us what it'll cost. We don't even have a budget. There's, there's words written down, but there's no actual plan in place that we can even guestimate what we would be charged. Also, the ordinance allows the city to charge any amount necessary to cover their direct and indirect costs for everything from maintaining to expanding the stormwater system and controlling everything that might get into it. And properties in the city will have to pay the stormwater fees in addition to assessments for capital improvements in front of their property, even if the assessment is for stormwater related projects, which the fee is supposed to be paying. And increased taxes and fees make a community less attractive for businesses and residents, potentially driving down property values and income tax revenue. And the ordinance in effect creates a drain commissioner for the city, as has been addressed, with even more power than the county drain commissioner. And has also been stated, the ordinance provides that city employees may access properties and buildings anytime to inspect or test, infringing on citizens' privacy. While we do not argue that the city needs extra revenue to provide some of the services outlined in the ordinance, we do feel that the ordinance needs to be rewritten to be more specific and smaller in scope. Moreover, we ask that the business community be engaged in the rewriting of the ordinance with the goal of creating a more balanced ordinance. We respectfully ask that you adopt the resolution before you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Miller. I work for the F.P. Miller Company downtown Jackson. I too agree with Mindy that you guys adopt the resolution. This ordinance does not do business any good whatsoever, in particular, our family business, who's under third generation and operating businesses in downtown Jackson. I've been in contact with a former citizen of Jackson, Kevin Hinckley, who's the mayor of Wixom, about this issue, and he said that there are other ways that are more fair and balanced that we can do this, other than this ballot proposal. So please, I ask you, on behalf of our family business and our family, to adopt the resolution. Thank you.
Peter Bormuth. I also came to speak on New Business 17A, the City of Jackson Stormwater Control Charge and Ordinance. And I would like to urge the commissioners to approve their resolution, and I feel like the ordinance, which I read, needs to be rewritten. It's, it's way too expansive, and I simply can't approve it in its current form, so I ask you to approve your resolution and to deny the city's stormwater ordinance. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing none? We have no special meetings of standing committees? At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 17th Board of Commissioners meeting. We have a motion in support? Any items for removal or correction? Seeing nor hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We've arrived at the consent agenda. We have a motion in support? Any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing nor hearing none? Madam Clerk, have you got the vote ready?
I do. I'm sorry. Commissioner Rice?
No. We're all set.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes, he voted yes.
Unanimous? Yes.
Consent agenda has passed unanimously. We've arrived at standing committees. At this time, Affairs and Agencies chaired by Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a couple of appointments to make tonight. The first is to the Ag Preservation Board. It's one slot that's open. It's a seat that's currently held by Nancy Hawley. There were two applicants, Nancy and Dave Van Hoof, and committee recommended Nancy Hawley.
We have a motion in support? Any nominations from the floor? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second seat is still open on the Department on Aging Advisory Council. It's occupied by Troy Ganton. There were no second applicants, so we'll continue to advertise. And likewise for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, it's a public member, environmental attorney, or related field. There were no applicants, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Standing Committee, Human Services chaired by Commissioner Alexander. Commissioner Alexander?
Thank you. At Human Services Standing Committee meeting, we had a conversation regarding the medical care facilities millage. There continue to be more questions that the commissioners were requesting information on, so the motion was made and it passed to come to, the conversation to come in front of this full board so that we could make sure our questions were being answered. In your board docs, the Administrator Controller's Office has submitted additional memo. You also have from the, I believe it was either study session or standing committee, a document from the medical care director as well, and we have the proposed resolution in our packet. So today, it is my understanding, we are here to ask questions and hopefully receive answers so that we may eventually move this to the full board for a vote at study session on Friday, August 8th.
Any questions that the board would like to make? Commissioner Rice?
Forgive me, I've got laryngitis, but I'll give it my best. My concern, my concern here, and I've stated it at the, at Human Services, even with the current information that we've received, if you look at the proposed resolution that came from the administrator's office, to me, it's still very generalized. There's just way too much, way too much room for mismanagement of funds from the medical care facility. I don't believe that the medical care facility actually has, shall we say, a strategy in place when it comes to spending the taxpayers' dollars. I would like to see, I would like to see some restrictions, some constraints in regards to this proposed resolution, as opposed to the, as I stated earlier, the generalization of it. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Mr. Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I can't support this right now. It's written in, what I've heard, and tell me if it's true or not, if you know, is they've, we're back to a 20-year, $9 million millage request. Do you know if that is true, or did I hear wrong?
Deputy Administrator Brown?
It is a 20-year millage that they're requesting. The revenue annually is a little over $400,000, so the 20-year aggregate would be around 10 million.
Okay. I distinctly remember hearing we needed 2.5 million for roofing and 2 million for parking lot, that's 4.5 million. The other 2.5 million, to me, is just fluff. I think, I don't even think the millage will pass if we don't have specific, direct justification for the uses of the money received. And when we have 2.5 million that's just hanging out there, basically we give them a debit card, and I don't think it'll pass without being specific and direct. And they've specific and direct for 4.5 million, but they're requesting eight, so I, I'm not supporting it until they get it right.
Commissioner Alexander?
In regard to that comment, if you recall, at Human Services, the directive was given to the commissioners, if you have a specific question that you would like answered, then please submit it to the administrator's office, and we will make sure either someone from the medical care facility or the administrator's office asks that. It is my understanding that we still have time to ask those questions and get specific answers, but the problem seems to be the questions either aren't being asked or in a clear enough manner so that the answers are given. I do realize they are more than happy to work with us to continue to get that information, and we do have that block of time. I think they are just looking for more specific, detailed questions.
Commissioner Elwell?
What I'll be looking for when I vote on it is as much detail as I can get as far as how the money's gonna be spent and how that is locked in to assure both the commission and the public that that's how the money is spent. And maybe Mike or Adam can answer this now, but if the millage, if we allow the millage to go to a ballot and it passes, does the Board of Commissioners then have to vote in any way on expenditures of those funds, or is it solely at the discretion of the medical care facility, Human Services Board?
Once you give them the money, that board will control those dollars. Once you give them the money. Adam doesn't agree with me, but go ahead, Adam, tell me why I'm not correct.
Well, it's probably just semantics here because in my conversations with the chair of the Human Services Committee, they anticipated it would go just as it does now, where they can't spend any of that millage money until the board appropriates it.
Talking semantics, 'cause that's what I'm talking about. When the board gives it to them, then they can spend it.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, though. It would have to come before us to allow them to spend it.
And.
And after we-
Do you know if that is true or did I hear wrong?
Deputy Administrator Brown?
It is a 20-year millage that they're requesting. The revenue annually is a little over $400,000, so the 20-year aggregate would be around $10 million.
Okay. I distinctly remember hearing we needed $2.5 million for roofing and $2 million for parking lot. That's $4.5 million. The other $2.5 million, to me, is just fluff. I don't even think the millage will pass if we don't have specific, direct justification for the uses of the money received. And when we have $2.5 million that's just hanging out there, basically, we give them a debit card, and I don't think it'll pass without being specific and direct. And they've specific and direct for $4.5 million, but they're requesting eight, so I'm not supporting it until they get it right.
Commissioner Alexander.
In regard to that comment, if you recall, at Human Services, the directive was given to the commissioners. If you have a specific question that you would like answered, then please submit it to the Administrator's Office, and we will make sure either someone from the medical care facility or the Administrator's Office asks that. It is my understanding that we still have time to ask those questions and get specific answers. But the problem seems to be the questions either aren't being asked or in a clear enough manner so that the answers are given. I do realize they are more than happy to work with us to continue to get that information, and we do have that block of time. I think they are just looking for more specific, detailed questions.
Mr. Elwell?
What I'll be looking for when I vote on it is as much detail as I can get as far as how the money's going to be spent and how that is locked in to assure both the commission and the public that that's how the money is spent. And maybe Mike or Adam can answer this now, but if the millage, if we allow the millage to go to a ballot and it passes, does the Board of Commissioners then have to vote in any way on expenditures of those funds? Or is it solely at the discretion of the medical care facility, Human Services Board?
Once you give them the money, that board will control those dollars. Once you give them the money. Adam doesn't agree with me, but go ahead, Adam. Tell me why I'm not correct.
Well, it's probably just semantics here because in my conversations with the Chair of the Human Services Committee, they anticipated it would go just as it does now, where they can't spend any of that millage money until the board appropriates it.
Talking semantics, because that's what I'm talking about. When the board gives it to them, then they can spend it.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, though. It would have to come before us to allow them to spend it, and after we approved it. But it would have to be spent on the specific thing that they come to us for, correct?
Yeah. Part of the challenge here is we've asked for a breakdown of how they want to spend this money, and thus far, we really haven't had an itemized list, really, showing where they're going to spend it.
Well, if you remember, that's exactly what I asked for.
I do remember.
So is it possible, or likely or unlikely, that we can get that before the 8th of August? I mean, I want to be supportive of this, but I again want to make sure that we have things locked down, know where the money's going to be spent, and know what it's for before I'm willing to allow it to go to a vote.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am completely supportive of what Commissioner Elwell has said. It seems to me that out of all the millages that have come before the county during my tenure, people have come, they've been very specific, they have a plan, it's laid out, and we don't have to, it's like pull teeth to get them to tell us what the money is going to be used for. Somehow, it seems like they feel they're doing us a favor to decide to ask for a millage. But to me, it's taxpayer dollars, period. And without a clear, concise list listing how those monies will be used during the 10-year time period, I am very, very sure that the voters will not support it. People want to know exactly where the money is going to be spent, when it is going to be spent during the whole time of the millage, because the money's going to be collected over 20 years. And I don't think any of us are going to be sitting here in 20 years. So unless we are very, very intentional with making sure that that millage states how those dollars are going to be spent during every year for which they're going to be raised, I am really, there's no way I can support it.
Mr. Leitner?
One of the concerns that I have is obviously the same thing that Gail, Commissioner Mahoney's response just stated with where the money is going, all the money that's coming in. And in our meetings and discussing this with other people, I haven't heard it said out loud, I guess, other than speaking to the chairman, that part of this bond pays for the existing bond. And part of my problem is, we ask repeatedly, we ask repeatedly for other departments to tighten their belt and adjust their budget. And we know that in two years or a year, they're going to ask for renewal of their current millage. And the constituents that I speak with can't support something like this right now to continue to pay a bond or to add a millage on a bond that they're already paying when our roads are in such disrepair. I've had it suggested to me that we do a countywide millage for a road repair rather than deal with the medical care facility. Just make them tighten their belt and adjust their budget.
Any further commissioner comments? Any further commissioner comments? Second round. Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A concern I have is, and we have all experienced this in the past, to me, there's not the appropriate oversight when it comes to the spending of this taxpayer's money. For example, many times, we've had the medical care facility come to us after the fact and then ask us for money, putting us on the spot. So we have to turn around and approve the MOE money, taxpayers' money, to take care of a situation that they've already done and spent money on or lost money on. So for us to sit here and think to ourselves, "Well, we have the oversight, they're going to come to us and get approval." Okay, that's fine, but look how many times they've come to us after they gave us no choice but to give them the money. And we've got to keep that in perspective. Another thing I'd like to say, that Plant-Moran study, those two documents they give us, to me, just briefly looking over those, they do no good by me in terms of my decision on this particular millage. The only thing I got out of that was, there was a recommendation made by Plant-Moran that the medical care facility go after private insurers to receive private dollars from insurance companies. Through my research, and I'm willing, like I've always done before, just like Commissioner Alexander has put me on the spot before, I was able to explain it. I can explain this. My perspective on this whole thing is, this is a way that the medical care facility is going to try to compete with the private sector. And we all know, from my perspective, that's not acceptable, and it will not work. And we definitely need to keep that in mind. Again, I'm involved in a lot of senior events. I'm on the regional senior board. I care about seniors as much as anybody here, but they will get the services from the medical care facility without this .1 millage. Not only do I not support it right now, but if I was staying at the polls November 4th to vote, I would vote no.
Any other commissioner comments? Mr. Elwell?
Just one to one of the issues Sarah brought up. Can the administrator or deputy administrator tell us either way whether this money could be used to pay the prior bond or not? I mean, that has been a quiet concern of many of us, but is that a legitimate fear or not?
In at the June study session, when Ron Markowski was asked to present to us, he informed the board that in approximately, don't hold me to the exact years, either 14 or 16 years, they would run out of money to be able to pay down the bond. And then the County Board of Commissioners would be expected to, because the building bond is held by the building authority, would be expected to make up that difference if a millage was not passed to subsidize this. The $4.5 million that Commissioner Rice refers to is interest payments. We all know when you borrow money for a home or you borrow money for a business, you have to make interest payments on bonds. That's what that $4.5 million is for, the extra $4.5 million that's in the formula. And that was in, again, the presentation that Ron Markowski made to us in the study session. The other issue of fiduciary responsibility, Commissioner Rice, you're correct, in the past, the medical care board didn't have a tendency to be responsible. And at that time, we changed that board. We appointed two different people to it. They then got involved directly in the day-to-day operations, which this board got very upset with, but hired a new manager, hired a new financial officer, and straightened those things out. And if you'll note, the last two years, they've not had any of those critical fines that plagued the medical care facility before or any of the issues that we had with it before. Now, do they need this millage? That's up for debate. Do we need to support them? That's what's up for debate. My understanding is that Thursday at 1:00 or 4:00? 4:00. The DHS board will again, will have a special meeting to attempt to answer the questions we produced tonight. Those questions, again, need to be forwarded to our Administrator's Office so we can develop them into written format so people can come up with an answer. Okay? Opposing something because of feelings, although makes it an emotional issue, doesn't put a practical spin on what we actually need to get an answer to. So please put your questions in writing, submit them to the Administrator's Office so in a public forum at the DHS board meeting this Thursday, we can have that discussion with them so they can return those answers. I think that we need to get those answers before the 8th and let the commissioners come up with new questions if they have them. The DHS board will be more than happy, I'm sure, to put together what their list of items they're going to spend things on. Kyle, when we created the medical care facility, we put in place an 80-20 funding stream. And that 80-20 funding stream involved the private sector and us being involved in doing private work for those people that needed, that were going to help pay for the funding for it. We closed Joey's Junction, which was supposed to be another funding stream. They were forced to move out due to complications of issues, and so now they have an unused resource over there in that space. That's what they're coming forward and saying to us. This is an alternative that the Board of Commissioners can say, "Let's do this with that space." If we don't think that's what should be done with that space, then that's what we need to tell them, and that's what we need to do Thursday at their meeting. On the other issue, I've had the privilege of serving on this board with Commissioner Mahoney, and I know she's quite responsible when it comes to the needs within the community. She represents a sector of the community that has a tendency to really utilize a medical care facility. And I would hope that she can have her questions answered also, so she's comfortable with this going on the ballot. And then we let the voters do it, and that's what I hope we're able to do tonight, is get the questions out there that we need to have answered. And I hope that we all can return those to the Administrator's Office so we can come to a good and positive solution. If we don't need to do this right now, then we don't need to do it right now. And that's what we need to come to grips with. The DHS of the medical care facility and their meeting. Any further questions for the Administrator's Office? If not, please, Phil?
I was wondering, as the Jackson County Medical Care Facility was put together, it's authority, it's an authority, I believe, is it possible if we decided to, is it possible to sell it and get out of that sector of the business?
Sure. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Alexander, would you like a motion to receive this document?
The document that's already in our board docs?
Correct.
Correct, from the Administrator's Office. Motion to receive.
We have a motion in support to receive the white paper produced by the Administrator's Office. Any further questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Alexander.
Thank you. So this is a public meeting. It's a DHS meeting. It has been posted, is scheduled for this Thursday, the 24th, at 4:00 p.m. at the medical care facility for anyone interested in sending some questions ahead of time so that they may be more prepared. They can go through the Administrator's Office. And again, I'm sure they will have public comment at the meeting as well.
Anything further? Thank you, Commissioner Alexander. Standing Committee Personnel and Finance chaired by our Vice Chairman, Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Duckham?
Yes, Vice, yes, Mr. Chair. We have no business to conduct tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duckham. We've arrived at unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Seeing nor hearing none. We're at new business, resolution regarding the City of Jackson's stormwater control charge. Entertain a motion for discussion?
So.
We have a motion? Do we have support?
Support.
Any discussion from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Palacek?
I hope that what you heard today from Vice Mayor Dobie's and from City Manager Mr. Birch eased some of your concerns. I have to tell you, with very few exceptions, I've had nothing but support by the citizens of my district to support the stormwater control fee. And I've had no fears of anybody being, having their home invaded by the city, just because supposedly they can, which they can't. We can't burn our leaves in the city. The only thing that we can do is rake them up, put them in bags, and hope that the Boy Scouts will continue to pick them up, or put them in the street and hope that the city will. We have an obligation to keep the waters clean, the headwaters of the Grand River, as well as other lakes, ponds, the lagoons. I think that as a citizen of the city of Detroit, of the Detroit, of the City of Jackson, that was quite the volpa, I'm one that will be paying these fees, and I would hope that you would join me today in defeating this resolution. Thank you.
Commissioner Elwell?
I'll be supporting the resolution, but I'd first like to thank City Councilman Derek Dobie's. We had a good conversation about it and exchanged our positions very well when he called. I've got a number of reasons I'm opposed to it. The first and foremost is that it is, or would, if passed, would give a blank check. And I just cannot fathom, there have been comparisons to different rules that the Board of Commissioners have or ways that we operate where we have high fines and whatnot that have been referenced here tonight. But in my time on the board, I can't think of one time that we've ever passed an assessment on every resident in the county, and especially one without telling them how much it is or how it's arrived at. So that's the main reason. There's no details in the proposal that explain those things. The question has been asked, why should the Board of Commissioners be concerned about it? The city is their own governmental entity, that's their issue, but they're also county residents. And I also know that many of our out-county residents also own businesses in the city. Of course, we heard from one of the city business owners tonight. It's reminiscent, another commissioner made the comment to me today, that it's reminiscent of a statement of, "We have to pass it before we can see what's in it." That's not my original statement, but it was brought up by another commissioner that remembered it. I also question whether the deadline was missed. I think that bit of information has been out there somewheres, that the deadline to even have this on the ballot was initially missed. So I'll be voting for the resolution in opposition to the city proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For me, this is kind of similar to what we just discussed, the debate we just had. Our concern is, we're looking for specifics. We're looking for, we're looking for details when we talk about the medical care facility millage. And in this particular situation, that's pretty much what we're saying here. We're not saying people shouldn't have a right to vote. What we're saying is, is this something that they should vote on underneath, in its current state? So I'll just leave it at that.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's certainly difficult for me to be on the opposite side of the issue with Commissioner Palacek, but I am very supportive of the resolution that the city has, that the county has against the resolution that the city is proposing. And as Commissioner Rice has alluded to, it's the same exact kind of thing. You guys could have given a formula so that people would be able to come up with how their property is going to be assessed these fees. There is no direction. It is as you see fit. Yes, throwing in the leaf component really gets the people in my community robbed up because a lot of them park on the street, and so their cars are parked through the leaves, you know, forever, it seems like, especially in my area, before they're ever picked up, as well as the potholes, and I could go on. But I really, really think that if you guys had have been on top of it and had the resolution looked at, I do know that you did miss the date and that you guys made a motion during your meeting to allow this to go on the ballot, even though you had missed the deadline. So I do know that for a fact. So, you know, I just think that I'm out telling people about it, and I am very happy that this commission has decided that this is important enough to hopefully get some press on to try and... get some press on to try and get people's attention. I think that the citizens of the community are gonna just see they're gonna get their leaves picked up. But I'm trying to get them to look at the bigger issue, is that they don't know how much it's gonna cost them to have their leaves picked up. And that's where the whole, um, issue has real big problems for me. So I am very much urging, as a city-county Commissioner, this Board to support the resolution that we have before us tonight. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Lutzke?
Um, I guess my biggest concern is anytime you've, you say, uh, as determ, I mean, the fee, the, the fee that we need will be determined by me. Uh, so when I need to make a bigger payment, you know, uh, I can throw anything in there, there's, there's no restriction as what I can, what administrative fees I can throw in there. And, um, I guess that, that's my biggest concern, is, is it seems to be wide open for the amount of various fees and administrative costs that can be thrown into this, um, fee. And, and I, I believe, the drain code was thrown out once earlier, but I believe in the drain code, there's also some stuff that says the fee can't exceed so much per mile or so much for quarter mile or something like that, that, uh, uh, it used to be in the, in the drain code anyway. Uh, but there's, this, the way this is written, there's no restriction on, on what can be thrown in there.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Duckham?
Well, I, I, uh, I'm bothered by this. My goal here is Commissioners foster a better relationship between the city and the county and the townships and, uh, and collaborate to get better services for better, for better money and make the tax dollar go farther, but, and I'm gonna risk this, I guess, because the number one thing that bothers me about this, and after our meeting, I'm gonna request the county administrator to look at our county ordinances, is that's the authority to enter private property. Uh, yeah, if you're home and you're watching your front yard, I guess you can ask somebody not to come, come in to your property, but I don't think that's what America's about. I, I wouldn't expect anybody to enter my property without asking first, and, uh, that bothers me. The open-endedness, the blank check part bothers me, and I've been contacted by that by several of my constituents that asked me to speak out on this, that have investments in Jackson City. And the vagueness of, you know, it's not just tied to, to, to one or two things. You, you can probably justify many things within this ordinance, and, uh, I can't support it the way it's written. Maybe if it was tied down better and had restrictions in there, in some specific uses other than leaf collection, including out the stormwater basins, uh, more specific, maybe it's something I could support, but right now, uh, you know, and I don't have a lot of people I represent in the City of Jackson. I do have a few, and I've had four or five people ask me to, to support the county resolution. That's what I'll have to do. Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Leitner?
Um, first of all, I wanna thank Derek Dobies for speaking with me last night and getting me the full ordinance as proposed. Um, I wasn't able to get it before that, so, um, I appreciate that. The other thing I appreciate is our right to be able to just, as a people, vote on something like this. And I don't like having to take a position on something I am not even gonna be able to vote for. Um, however, after reading through this ordinance, um, the biggest concern for me was a lot of the terminology in regards to the fees, just like everybody else has said. To me, when you say direct and indirect, that just opens up a can of worms for anything. Well, I, I just don't believe in that. Um, and as such, after reading this ordinance and reading through the fee, or, you know, I asked about a formula, and it's not specific. I don't think it's specific enough. And when they're describing, you know, the, the spaces that will offset the fee, um, that formula's not in there either. So they can tell us, yeah, well, the county owns enough in, of open green space, so you won't have to pay a fee, but there's not a formula. So who's to say when you come back, if this were to go through? Well, on second thought, only that particular space will be, you know, will have the credit. And I just, I just think that it's kind of just a not, uh, not very well-written ordinance. And I know it was taken from an old one, probably, but, um, I think that it could have been looked over a lot better. And as such, I would, I'm gonna support the resolution to, against, uh, this ballot proposal.
Any other Commissioner comments? First round, second round, Commissioner Palacek?
Mr. Chairman, on Resolution 14A, one of the things you finished with is, don't oppose it because of your feelings, and I'm just hoping that some of the past history that the city and the county has gone through in regards to the storm water fee isn't influencing your decision and your vote today. So, thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you post a vote?
Moved by Commissioner Mahoney, supported by Commissioner, I think Commissioner Lutzke. I'll correct it in a minute. I can't see it.
Resolution passed, 8-1. We've now arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. The guidelines for this public comment are the same as the first, except for three minutes. Please step up and address the Commission if you'd like to.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to introduce myself. I'm Dale Morretts, and I'm a candidate for the Michigan State House of Representatives, 65th District. I grew up on a farm where I learned to work hard, solve problems, improvise, and innovate. I've been a teacher in the public education system. I'm a veteran, having served in the United States Army during the Cuban Missile Crisis in the early years of the Vietnam War. Since 1969, I have founded alone or with others, five successful small businesses in this area. I've sold my interest in three of those and still hold ownership in two of them. Four of those five still operate successfully in this community. I'm the inventor alone or with others on 12 patents with three more that are in various stages of submission. I've advocated for this community, its people, and small business at every level of government. I served as a delegate to the Governor's Conference on Small Business. I served twice as a Michigan delegate to the White House Conference on Small Business. And I sat on the Board of the Michigan State Chamber of Commerce and chaired its Small Business Council. At the request of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce and the NFIB, I served as a representative of small business at the conference in the Cabinet Room at the White House with President Reagan and several of his Cabinet members discussing the proposed changes to the tax Twice I've, uh, served on the Board of the Jackson Chamber of Commerce, and two years served as its Chair. I helped to found the Jackson County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and served as its Chair for the first years of its existence. I served on the Board of the Jackson Community Foundation, and currently serve on the Boards of the Center for Family Health and the Michigan Purchasers Health Alliance. In education, I volunteered extensively in my younger son's classes, taught junior achievement in every section of their grade, grades one through eight. I received the Frost School Volunteer of the Year Award in 2002.
Thirty seconds, Dale.
I was selected as a 1983 Michigan Small Business Person of the Year. I ask for your support in helping me to support our state and our needs. The big three of Michigan are manufacturing, agriculture, and tourism. All three of those require good roads and an educated workforce. I ask for your support and for you to join me in advancing Michigan. Thank you.
Um, I wanna thank you for your consideration, uh, Mr. Chairman and Honorable Board. Um, wanna make it pretty clear, though, that when we stated, um, that this ordinance was no different than the ordinance that was in effect before, that is true, except for the credits. Um, while I'm disappointed at the stance, I, I do believe that some of the information derived was erroneous in nature. I don't believe that, I don't believe that you necessarily came up with it on your own. I believe that at some point, uh, the information provided to you, and not certainly by your Administrator, but by, um, just in general, people have a lot of rhetoric out there that's negative regarding, uh, a blank check, which we don't believe happened here, any more than any other unit of government has a blank check. That's what the political process is for. If this Board were setting a resolution to set fees on anything, mental health, any service provided, the only recourse residents have is to come before your Board and argue it, as your duly representatives. They don't have a public vote to turn down a fee that you set. It's also said that, um, the ordinance was poorly written. It was written by Miller, Canfield, Paddock &amp; Stone, one of the top law firms in the state. It was written specifically to address language in the bolt decision, in which the county was successfully, um, won a lawsuit against the city for this. The language of indirect and direct cost is directly from that suit. It's directly from state statute that deals with reasonable and customary fees charged. That is the recourse that people have to be able to decide. That's the case that was made in the Court of Appeals, also with the housing code that the City of Jackson and the fee they charged for that. And the Court of Appeals determined that simply, and so did the state court, and so did the state Supreme Court, determined that a fee, because it is regulated by state law, that has to be reasonable and customary for the indirect and direct cost of that fee, is something that is legitimate to charge. So I just, I ask, I appreciate your, um, your candor, I appreciate, um, your vote either way. Um, I've seen these businesses, no hard feelings, we appreciate, um, what you do for the county. Thank you.
Uh, private citizen, uh, actually, uh, like to thank, uh, Pat for, uh, for being so eloquent and nice, uh, um, you know, he, he reports to me, and I'm glad that he can maintain a professional relationship. Um, I report to my constituents, and, um, we are trying to clean up the city, um, clean up Jackson, sweep our streets, uh, provide more street sweeping, uh, pick up our leaves, and provide the services that our residents want. Um, and I'd like to thank, uh, Commissioner Palacek, uh, for recognizing that and for voting to oppose the resolution. Um, you know, sometimes it feels like the city is the ugly stepchild of the county, um, when we're really just trying to provide, uh, the services that our residents want. Um, there's a lot of, uh, like, uh, Pat said, there's a lot of, um, uh, falsities flying around. Um, the deadline being missed really has nothing to do, uh, with the ordinance on the ballot. It was, uh, approved by council, sent to the county clerk, and approved for the ballot. Uh, the blank check, um, is, is, is something, uh, as Pat addressed, um, we don't put, uh, amounts, uh, fees in, uh, res, in ordinances, we put those in resolutions, um, so that we can have, um, some fluctuation to reduce those costs as we find ways to make those services more efficient and effective. Um, to, to say that we have to, that it, it reminds you of being, having to pass it before we know what's in it, um, we actually passed this two years ago, and for a good year and a half, we did a good job at administering it, at running those services, at cleaning the streets, at providing leaf pickup, until that fee was eliminated. Uh, we did a good job at providing services for the residents, we did a good job at reducing those fees. Uh, we did it twice for residents, uh, once for business, uh, because we could make that more efficient, because, uh, we, uh, found a way to, um, reduce those costs and passed on that cost savings, uh, to the residents and to the businesses. Uh, so that's our track record. We have a very good job of doing it. For all this worry about, uh, the city coming and exploding the costs, um, out of the sky, we have a, we're, we're accountable to the constituents that we serve, just as every Commissioner here is.
Thirty seconds, Derek. Thank you, though.
Um, you know, Patrick's addressed a lot of, uh, the issues about coming out of the property, um, those are standard, um, uh, things that we find in many ordinances in the city, um, in the county as well. So, um, I'm disappointed in, uh, the vote here tonight. I thank you for, um, considering the city, uh, being so engaged in the city affairs. I would encourage any of you to move into the city, um, we would welcome you with open arms.
Your time is up. Thank you, Derek.
Um, I just have a couple of things. In regards to the medical care facility, uh, as a taxpayer, I have huge concerns about, uh, giving money to any government entity, um, without some kind of controls. And one of the questions I would ask is, once the, i-if the millage goes forth and is passed, is there any oversight by, uh, this body on those projects? Or once the millage passes, then they're free to spend that money as they see fit and don't have to answer to anyone until the 20 years is up and the money is exhausted? That, that would be one of the questions that I would like you to ask of them. Um, and, uh, in regards to the, the, uh, storm water fee, um, even though, and this is more as, as I am the Blackman Township Supervisor, in case people don't know, we're kinda obscure, we haven't been in the news much, but, uh, yeah. Um, I have heard from business owners and, um, and property owners that, seeing as how we wrap right around the city, that they do have some concerns in regards to if this passes in the city, well, then what, what does that mean for adjoining properties? And they have some concerns that maybe it might reach out further. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Um, just to address, uh, an issue regarding the city's ability to be upfront and the city's ability to tell you what they're going to do. I contacted Patrick Birch the other day about an issue, well, I've had a long-running issue with the city about the spraying of oversight in their cemeteries. And, um, after that contact, Mr. Birch sent me an email saying, you know, "You're jumping to conclusions, you shouldn't do that, you know, why are you always so hostile and threatening?" And so I went up to the Mount Evergreen Cemetery where Mr. Birch said that they had been investigating some new, non-toxic way to control weeds around the gravestones, and I found a worker up there spraying oversight on them. So Mr. Birch lied to me, um, you know, just flat-out lied to me. And that's happened before. And I wanna let you know that that's the kind of behavior you might expect from the current city manager. current city manager.
I'd like to thank the Jackson County Board of Commissioners for the consideration for the property agreement between Jackson County and Henry Township. It's going to help benefit the residents of Henry Township tremendously in the project that we're moving forward with in our township, so thank you. Thank Dave Lutzke, Mike Overton, Adam Brown, Rick Shealy, Jerry Peterson. A lot of work's been involved in it, and a lot of time. And again, thank you on behalf of the residents of Henry Township.
I appreciate the opportunity, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Van Huff, lifelong resident of Jackson County. I'm just returning back, actually retiring from the Marine Corps, 22 years of service, and coming back home. And I've gotten with my county commissioner, Julia Alexander, offering my services to the county, having been, lived here all my life, for most of my life, and also, you know, being a licensed attorney, and, you know, having a master's in public administration. I just, I, having been in the service, feel that I need to, beyond, you know, my private interests, you know, provide, you know, and bring to, you know, the public service any of the skills that I can provide. And I appreciate the opportunity, introduce myself, and I look forward to working with you, ladies and gentlemen, in the future. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Duckham?
I'd like to request that our administrator review county ordinances that could possibly give authority to trespass on private property. I do not believe in this. I was unaware that our ordinance contains such language, and I would consider the repeal of such ordinances, if at all possible.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Leitner?
I just want to let everybody know, the fair is going to be starting, it'll be August 3rd through the 9th. Thursday, as printed in the fair schedule, says it's Veterans Day, and it's $3 admission for veterans, and that is not correct anymore. With the help of a sponsorship through AT&amp;T, veterans will get in free all day on Thursday, August 7th, with proper identification, so ID, just military ID. Other than that, we have the Alabama Concert Sunday night, there's still tickets available. And then Monday night, we have Warrant, Sebastian Bach, and Quiet Riots, rock bands. So, I encourage everybody to buy tickets and patronize our fair. Thanks.
Commissioner Plachek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have spoken to both sides on the hotel at One Jackson Square, the site. The hospital tells me that they're all set and ready to move, but it's the county that's holding them up. I spoke with Adam, he said, "The county's ready to move on that, but the hospital's holding them up." And I was hoping that we could get an update on what's happening with that site.
We will address that in his Friday update to all commissioners. Seeing no other commissioner comments, we have no closed session, but be aware, we will have one in August, most likely. We are adjourned.